Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September 21st meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well said, thank you. Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Leo.
Present.
Trustee Alfassi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. Notice the absence of trustee Luisee. He's on a wonderful vacation, I hear. I have a few appointments to make tonight. The first is the reappointment of Kathy Galucci as Assessment Review Board Chair to expire on September 30, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Second is the reappointment of Gina DiMarco as member of the Assessment Review Board for a term to expire on September 30, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. There are no presentations or public hearings tonight. That's going to bring us to the adoption of minutes, which is the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of August 10, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
abstain.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences this month?
No, we don't.
We do not, okay. That will bring us to the very first opportunity to address this board on anything that's on our agenda. Is there anybody in the public who has something to talk about of an item that's on this agenda tonight? Yes, sir. You just tell us your name and address, please.
Jerry Fraschanti, 4 Concert Drive, Bumpin' 4L. I notice here in item four, has been a public hearing set for the consideration proposal modification to the village code regarding restaurants and fast food?
That's on our agenda. We actually, how the process works is we have to schedule the public hearing in advance of actually opening that hearing. So we're going to pass a resolution tonight to schedule the hearing, and at our October meeting, we will open that public hearing. So there'll be a time to speak on that issue.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'm going to skip out of order a little bit for a slight special presentation, and I'm going to ask lovely Billups if she would please come on up. I know she has something to address tonight. And thank you for all your service with ECAP.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Steve. I know you intervened a little bit. Good evening, I'm lovely Billups, South High Street, Tuckahoe. I have something that's not on the agenda, but a few things I do want to bring forward. First, in memoriam and in honor of Steve Quigley, when he passed away, I was not in town, nor was my daughter Gina, who takes, took that 6:52 train with him every morning. So when we returned, it was quite a shock, but I just had to take a second to tell you how much I admired and honored this gentle man, this scholar, this humanitarian. And when I read his obituary and I saw the mention of the Jesuit precepts, I understood what was so deeply moving and touching and human about this man. I wanted his family and this village to know how much we respect him. He was a political minority on the board, but you never felt that he was there for political purposes. He was there for the village of Tuckahoe and its citizens. So I just want to give him that honor publicly tonight. That's first good news. Second good news is I want to thank Chief Costanza, the Police Department, and I think it's the municipality program for the employment of my grandson in the summer program, Max Pierce. It was, his bosses were Mark and Elliot, but it was the first time he received his own paycheck. He used to work for his father, who gave him pennies for whatever, but he was so proud of that. And the treatment that he received, the knowledge that he received, he's a big expert now in everything about the streets. He's telling me what to do and what the sign means and all of this. But I want to thank this village. I'm a big supporter of the Police Department, as you know, and I think it's good to say something great and good when it comes, when it's necessary. And I just take my hat off, I love Tuckahoe and I love the services, and thank you so much for what you did for one young man. He's a great kid anyway, but you helped, you kind of put some more polish on it. Thank you so much, including Chief, okay? And now the other is a plea and maybe even a deep concern for me was not having a Memorial Day parade down Main Street in Tuckahoe this year. And I'm saying that very pedantically because I mean it. It was a great disappointment to the people at our end of town. You don't, you have to see the seniors who had hardly ever get out, who bring their chairs out to sit and wave to each other across the street just to see the parade. I don't know what happened. I just don't want it to happen again.
No, I'm just going to help you out here a little bit with that. The veterans decided, and we thought it was actually a good decision, that what they're going to do is every other year, they're going to actually run the parade, one year in Tuckahoe, one year in Eastchester. So this was Eastchester's year. So next year, that parade is actually going to, not only is the parade going to come down into Tuckahoe, but you remember a couple of years ago, they, we had a big celebration there, we had the parasylum Marine Corps band. You're going to see that next year.
Okay. So now what we do is, we hope that the seniors live an extra year now so they can come.
Well, I certainly hope so.
Well, I, it's partially satisfactory to me, but I, maybe you need to let the community know a little bit more because it was really sad. Plus, young people or families that had moved out of Tuckahoe but who are part of that ritual for all those years came back. They were up on High Street looking, saying, "What happened to the parade?" So please, okay, so next year, this-
It'll be next year, and I'll tell you a little bit of the reasoning behind that is that unfortunately, there are not as many people who attend these parades, whether it's that parade or any parade. So they felt that if they had two parades, they would have virtually, they would be marching to empty streets. So their thought process was if they were to go ahead and have a concentrated effort of having that parade this year in Eastchester, they actually did have a, we had a memorial service on Memorial Day in Depot Square. It was a very short service. And then after that, the big parade was in the town, but next year, it's our turn. So it's going to be every other year, just sort of like the Gold Star Mothers. This Sunday, I'm glad you're here because it's, I can plug the, it's Gold Star Mothers' Sunday. And this year, it's Tuckahoe's year to go ahead and have the veterans come on down. We're going to close off the one lane of the bridge and the Gold Star Mothers Memorial Bridge, and we're going to have the Gold Star Mothers Memorial Service right there in Tuckahoe. Next year, that service will be at the Gold Star Mothers Memorial up in the town. So it's-
Okay, I hear you. And the one thing I don't get is why you think that there would be so few people, so if it's in Tuckahoe, the Eastchester people don't come or vice versa?
No, it's just, it's, a lot of people are actually going to one parade. So they felt that if they had two parades, there would just be half as many people at each parade. Well, I'm saying, they made a decision to rotate it every opposite year, so.
I get that they made the decision, I'm just kind of inserting another thought, and I'm hoping it's not indelible, just to think about it. Because I really was quite concerned about the number of people who never come out maybe for anything else. That's a moment of pride. And my taxes, which are considerable, that are going up to Tuckahoe School District, they have a band, they have all the, I don't, I'm just asking you to think about, but thank you for your response.
Of course.
Thank you for letting me cheat on the agenda and have a, it's the end of summer, which wasn't great anyway, so.
Well, you can actually talk a little bit about that poker game, I guess that was for the ECAP, right? You're here also to talk about ECAP, so.
Yes.
It was a nice fundraiser, I heard this weekend.
It was, yes. And again, I'd like to thank the people, Steve was there, and Louis Maracoca from Eastchester. This is, I am chair of the Eastchester Community Action Council Program now, it's called Partnership, ECAP. And I do want to thank the Tuckahoe for its support and Eastchester. The mayor is a member of that board, Mary Marvin, Mayor Bronxville's a member of the board, and we, and Danny Lang, who is a citizen of Tuckahoe, is just an outstanding contributor and supporter of CAP. And I'm asking the community, when you hear that there is something being presented by ECAP, please support it. Because if you're there on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday and see the seniors and the children and the parents who are being served by that organization, you would be very, very proud. We're into, the exterior has been renovated to the point where it's worthy of looking like the new townhouses down there. We're working hard on the interior. And I guess I get it now that you opened the door, too bad now, is, I'm asking this board, the Tuckahoe Village Board, the Eastchester Board, and the Bronxville Board, our next big fundraiser is a Martin Luther King Day breakfast. This year, we want actual tables of the organizations, and we're going to have gold tables and silver tables, and we want the board there, all of you there. We don't keep people there a long time anymore. You know, we used to sit there and try to baptize people into the afternoon, that's over. We have, the program is succinct, it's very well presented. The children who are in the after-school education program at ECAP are just magnificent. If you stop by there sometime and see what a great job they're doing, we could all be proud of it. And again, you know, I'm a fan of this village of Tuckahoe. I love it, and thank you for your service, especially all that big money you make as trustees and mayors. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Have a good-
Thanks for coming down tonight. That's going to bring us to our res, oh, I guess anybody else from the public? Anything on our agenda? And if not, we're going to move on to our resolutions. First resolution tonight is Resolution Number One, authorizing the board to establish a standard workday and reporting. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I'll ask our village administrator, Mr. Burke, just to quickly weigh in on this a little bit. We've done a lot of housekeeping in his department here, and this is one of those items.
Just to provide a little bit of perspective on this, this actually all stems from the pension system. So the comptroller's office actually came down, they did an audit, kind of our books and some of the things we had to clean up. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we actually cleaned up, we cleaned up some of this stuff, they actually came back and they wanted some further cleanup of this. We've gone back and forth, actually Camille's really taken the lead in this, so thank you, Camille, to go back and forth, figure out exactly what they want, exactly what they need. She actually went to a day-long seminar, which, you know, God bless her to do that, about the pension system. So this just kind of clears it up. It basically says is our full-time positions, how long is their standard workday in order to report it to the retirement system? That's all it says, so it's just a little cleanup.
Oh, thank you. I know you need a big broom while the cleaning up you've had to do here since you got on board. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Two is approving the use of certain streets for a walkathon by the Immaculate Conception School on Friday, October 9th. The rain date will be the following Friday, October 16th. Beginning at 10:00 in the morning, the walkathon will start at the ICS parking lot, then it will proceed down Winter Hill Road to Depot Square and back. A certificate of insurance will be provided. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Three is appointing Hennington, Dernham, and Richardson, Architectural and Engineering, PC, also known as HDR, as the environmental consultant for the 2015 fiscal year in accordance with the proposed master agreement, received September 17, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We'll have a little discussion on this. We decided as a village board with the hotel application, that's before the planning board, we decided that we wanted to make sure that we brought in a firm who would be able to examine the environmental aspect of any approvals that comes out of the DEC and the DOH Department Health. We recognize that our small, very small building department doesn't have the expertise or the manpower to maybe monitor the approvals and the approved plan that's going to be implemented by the developer. Whether it be the hotel, as you notice, this is an environmental consultant that will consult for the village on any project in the village that we deem necessary that has an environmental component to it or an element to it. So this is a good choice. Glad that David did the homework and actually got some good proposals for us. Some of the board members actually are aware of this firm, I believe Antonio, you know this firm?
Yes, I've actually worked with HDR, my past, I worked for U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. They're a global firm, they're, they have approximately 8,000 technical employees throughout the world. They're just a world-class organization, and I'm really glad that the village selected them. David did a fantastic job selecting them. I think they're ranked number 11 as far as engineers throughout the country, and they've done this type of work before, and they've done it for many municipalities in Westchester, so I think it's a great selection.
So we're choosing a good firm, and probably their first project will be the hotel. If that makes it through the planning board, what'll happen is that this firm will then step in. The cost that we would have to pay for this firm is going to be reimbursed to us by any of the applications that are put before the building department. So it's really, there's no expense to the village, it's all reimbursable costs, and it's good to have somebody who is an expert in this field to just make sure that as any of these projects are navigating through the construction process, that there is an expert who's actually keeping an eye on it. So very happy about that. Roll call, please.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Four is setting a public hearing to consider the proposed modifications to the village code regarding restaurants and fast food establishments. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And that's, as we discussed just a few minutes earlier, next month, the public hearing will be open, so anybody who has any questions or if there's any input that they want to make on fast food establishments or restaurants of any type, please come to our next month's meeting. The public hearing will officially be open, and you'll be on the record for any of your comments.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Five is declaring a Ingersoll Rand Model UC-200 air compressor and a 2001 Dodge 1-ton dump truck, dumb truck, that's a dump truck, as, it is a dumb truck, as surplus for sale. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Six is accepting a bid in the amount of $2,236, that's amazing, for a Segway personal transporter, and $76 for a Vespa Radigo scooter. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, whoever's going to buy that Segway. I heard it's somebody in Las Vegas, is that true? Seems, okay. Maybe we'll see it next time we're out in Las Vegas.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Seven is authorizing the dance gallery to perform a Halloween flash mob on Friday, October 30th, in front of the building at 25 Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Eight is authorizing the use of certain DPW equipment for the Junior League of Bronxville Touch a Truck program, event, event, on September 26th, from 10:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number Nine is a tax sorcery settlement in the amount of $15,009.39 for the premises known as BMM1 LLC, address of 83 Main Street, Tuckahoe, New York, Section 33, Block 6, Lot 14A on the village assessment map, for the assessment years of 2010 through 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And we have a series of bond resolutions, and we're going to start off with Resolution Number 10, which is bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $801,720 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the village of Tuckahoe County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs of, first is the acquisition of police vehicles, and second is the payment of judgments and settled claims to be paid by the village resulting from tax sorcery proceedings brought pursuant to Article 7 of the New York Real Property Tax Law. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Discussion? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this bond resolution, I'd like David and counsel to make clear what the tax sorcery is, which is basically it's a, it's a settlement of a claim, is that correct?
It's correct.
Right. And the second part of this resolution would be to go ahead with the program, the program which I in fact am in favor of, which is to replace the police vehicles on a steady basis. And maybe you can talk a little bit about how that program is in place right now.
Sure. What we have in the Police Department right now, and I guess this is before I started, and it was several years of kind of keeping police cars a very long time and having very high maintenance cost. So what the village board put in place is a program of replacing one one year and then two the next year. What makes that so advantageous for us is that off-state contract, we get police cars for a very good rate, so around $23,000, $24,000 for a police car, keep those for approximately three years, right until the warranty is about to expire, and then we sell those police cars and we're getting 13, we almost got $14,000 for it last year. So it's basically spending $10,000 for a police car for three years. So it's actually on a really good schedule of keeping the police cars, a nice new fleet, while also not having the maintenance cost, the long-term maintenance cost that we were incurring for several years.
So how much would a maintenance, if we, if we did not bond for this tonight for a police vehicle and did not stay on that schedule, how much do we think we would have additional costs as far as maintenance for that vehicle, maybe for one year?
The police vehicle that's currently in this bond, in this budget year, the '15, '16 budget year, there's cash for one police vehicle. What this was doing is providing the funds to bond one police vehicle for next budget year while also having the cash for the other, the second vehicle. So this year, we're on a one-vehicle cycle, next year, we're on a two-vehicle cycle. We'd pay cash for one vehicle and we'd bond the second vehicle out. And this is the avenue that it was decided that we would consider bonding for it now because we're bonding for all these other projects, we're paying the bonding costs, we're going to do this now, it would just be, and it would be, it would help the chief plan some of the replacement costs going forward.
So this would be vehicle number two of the two vehicles for next year?
Yes.
And when you say next year, you mean June 2016 to-
Yes.
June 2017?
Yes.
Okay, got it, okay.
So if we, if we bond for this vehicle this year, we would not have to bond next year, is that correct, for a vehicle?
The thought was for police vehicles, we wouldn't have to do any, any type of bonding or banning for police vehicles, yes.
Well, I'm hesitant. I think it's a, and my colleagues know, I've been wrestling with a few of these bonding issues, and I've discussed it with them. And I've really had to decide whether I was going to vote yes or no for this and try to put it over for another year. But I've spoken with a couple of colleagues, and although I'm hesitant, I'm going to be voting in favor of these bonds today, all of them. Although I don't like bonding for new money for approximately $150,000, $160,000, the cost of bonding for those, those new things right now is fairly cheap. It's very inexpensive for bonding right now. How much we would have to pay in interest, since we're doing all this bonding right now, there's a cost associated with that, it's about 30, between 30 and $50,000 to go out and advertise, et cetera. I came in here tonight thinking I was going to be voting no on a few items. I've changed my mind, so I'm going to be voting in favor.
Good, thank you. Anybody else have any comments on this?
Yeah, I think it's, it's important that we as a board act unanimously on these things. I think it's, it's a great opportunity now, as Steve mentioned, it's, it's cost a great deal of money to bond, to actually take out a bond, so it makes the most financial sense to do it all at once and do it now and just move forward. I think it's a great decision, I'm glad you're on board.
And the additional bonding that we're, that we're doing when it comes, when it comes to a few of these items is about, about $200,000, give or take, of new monies, additional monies, because we're going to do some bonding that's refinancing as well.
There's a lot of refinancing.
Which has already been spent. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, no, the, the new money just for this, I mean, just Resolution Number 10 is $800,000.
No, I understand that, but that's a tax sorcery, we can't get away from the tax sorcery. What I'm saying is for additional items, there's going to be bonding for this police vehicle, there's going to be bonding for some, some new structures down at DPW, those, those things together are approximately $200,000.
Just under $200,000.
Right, yeah.
I just want to be clear, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number 11 is bond resolution dated September 17, 2015. You know, let me just stop for a second. That's a correct date, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, I asked the same question. It's the date that the village received those, the resolutions.
From Bond Counsel, I guess.
From Bond Counsel, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
I asked the same thing, should it be dated today?
Today, okay.
It was, we received those on the 17th.
I know, these are.
Got those on the 17th.
These are unbelievably technical of all the resolutions, so that's why I'm just questioning, thank you. So, resolution number 11 is bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $56,318 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs of, number one, the acquisition and installation of computer upgrades, and number two, the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of certain alterations to village buildings, all in and for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Maybe just, sorry. Dave, maybe you just want to go into a little detail as to what this is for, too.
Sure. This resolution, three main items on here, one is for computer system upgrades and the approximate amount of $20,000. That's actually going to be for a brand-new server here at Village Hall and some other computer work that desperately needs to be done here. And it's also some funding for the Police Department and some of their license plates reader. The second part is a grant that the, we received, the library received, an LED grant for LED lights in the library, this is the matching part of it, we received a $10,000 grant, this is the $10,000 that the Village Board had previously voted to put up.
And without voting for this in favor of that, that grant would go away. We would lose $10,000 worth of grant money.
I don't, I wouldn't say it would go away, we would just have to find that $10,000, the Village Board would have to let me know where would you like to take that $10,000?
But we still would have to come up with $10,000. We still would have to come up with $10,000.
Otherwise, we'd lose the mic, right?
Right, otherwise, we'd lose the mic.
Yep. And then the third portion is Village Hall upgrades. One of the major things in Village Hall is, I'm going to say, a bandage on our elevator. It's not a Band-Aid, it's not a permanent fix, but it's going to be a bandage and it can cost probably upwards of $15,000 to get another 10 years out of that elevator because it is slowly failing on us. The older elevators get, the harder it is to get certain parts for them. So it's kind of a bandage on the elevator.
And I'm going to toss in there, too, the elevator that is used by our quarter-million-dollar-a-year tenant who's on the third floor, who pays a quarter-million dollars in rent to us, thank you.
And it's a safety issue as well.
Of course, yeah. Thank you.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Okay, now, resolution number 12 is bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $730,293 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs of, number one, the construction and reconstruction of street improvements, and number two, the acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance, all in and for the village. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And David, you can go down this list.
Sure, there's two projects on this resolution. One is a DPW truck, it's actually an F-350 with a dump and plow and sander, so it's one of our main, it'll be one of our main plows during the course of the snow season, but it won't snow this year, so it's not going to be used. And then the second is up to, I just wanted to make sure that the board knows it's up to $650,000 to pay the remaining costs of the Crestwood Utility Underground project down there. What this resolution allows you to do is borrow up to that amount, not over that amount. What we're trying to do in the next, say, 30 to 40 days is get the final number on the cost of that project to figure out exactly how much it's going to cost us to it, so we don't have to borrow more money for it, but we also don't want to take out money that we don't need. So it's going to, it's going to allow us, that grace period to figure out exactly how much the rest of that project's going to cost us, and we're going to put an end to that project.
And just a couple of footnotes on that, that particular project, we've already received over a million dollars of other people's money, other people, meaning we had grant money to the tune of $700,000. The guy putting up the building down there, Crestwood, gave us $400,000 bucks. So this is, this and some other money that we've spent is our, the village's share towards getting the lines underground, sidewalks down there, little pocket park, and paving the street, I'll talk about that later on, because I'm getting a lot of calls about that street that's unpaved down there. So, yeah, it was, oh, that's right, where I was going with that is, I think it is important to note that if we don't spend, let's say we only spend $500,000, but we have secured $650,000, what do we do with that extra $150?
If we have taken that $650 out of the, we've already borrowed that $650?
Or you're saying that what we're going to do is before we actually bond, we're going to fine-tune that number?
It's twofold. Before we actually take the money out, probably go out and bond for that money, we're going to try to get a better grasp of the actual cost, we're going to fine-tune that, because we don't want to take $650 out, we want to fine-tune that to take just as much as we need.
Yep.
If it is, if it comes to the date where we have to take that $650 out, but we only need $550 of it, that $100,000 has to go back to pay the principal of.
That's what I wanted to, I want that point to be clear, that it's not that we would take that extra $100,000 and say, hey, you know what, let's put a new roof on, you know, no, the money has to, the money in these bonds that we do not use has to go back to paying the principal of these bonds. Okay, good.
And I just wanted to emphasize, Mr. Mayor, and you're absolutely right, two-thirds of this project was already paid for by grants and the developer, and this is already a pro, these, this is a bill, basically is what it is. This, services have already been rendered, the lines are already underneath, so we're paying something that we have to.
True.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 13 is bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $91,800 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to the local finance law to finance the costs of the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of a Class A building, oh, I'm sorry, Class A building improvements. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And this is for the salt shed, am I right?
Not the whole thing, no. This is for the DPW building.
Okay.
In whole, the salt shed would be approximately $25,000 to $30,000. We have money in here to put a new roof on the older building.
Oh, okay, right.
As we look to do that, we look to hopefully, hopefully do as much work as possible in-house to be able to put a roof on there. It's come, the board has made the decision that that's going to stay, that building is going to stay, we need that building. This roof will hopefully allow us to focus on other things. Once the roof is done, we can do some other structural things to that building to keep it long-term. And then there's some money in there to be able to do some heating and kind of energy efficiency upgrades that are desperately needed down there.
Right. One of the problems that we had down at our DPW garage, and this is where the mechanic works, is the heating system is just not efficient at all. It's an overhead gas-fired fire trap, it's an overhead gas-fired heating system that the minute the door is open, you lose everything. So in essence, we're heating it 24/7, it just never stops. So we're going to be looking at putting some radiant heat in the floor, and once you put radiant heat in your floor, it's amazing how you almost hardly ever turn that heat on at all, it's incredible how effective that is. So I know that's one of the things we talked about. One of the garages, the radiant heat was installed in the floor as a donation, which I thought was very nice, I think it was DeJaco Plumbing, am I right? Very nice plug for DeJaco, so we'll look at maybe doing something like that, as well as maybe improvements to the large overhead door, we talked about that roof. And I just want to spotlight a little bit about the salt, right? Unfortunately, our salt has been exposed to the elements. We cover it as best as we can, but we've, you know, during a huge snow event, when you have your salt uncovered and you're constantly in there pulling your salt out, your salt is exposed, so it's going to be, some of that is going to be watered out. And I know that we need to make sure that we protect that. First of all, we don't want to lose the investment because we don't want our salt to be washed into the storm drain, that's number one, but maybe, maybe number one is we shouldn't be putting our salt in the storm drain through wash-off. So that's something that we're going to definitely take an aggressive position on to make sure that we don't pollute our storm water system with all that salt and whatever else is in there, as well as we protect our asset. I mean, it's, salt costs a little bit less now because it's always related to the fuel cost, but that's going to change, we know that. So, anyway, that's my two cents on that.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. The next series of resolutions, bond resolutions, are basically refinance resolutions, so I'll go through them. The first is reso number 14, it's an amendatory bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, amending a bond resolution that was dated April 20, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $191,985 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
I just want to make clear that the next few, I think there's one, two, seven resolutions for bonding are for refinancing of existing bond debt, is that correct?
It's all money that we've borrowed for and received a band for. What this is doing is this is turning that short-term borrowing into long-term debt. So you've already voted to borrow this money, this is just turning it into an actual bond, yes.
Right, thank you. In favor.
Roll call's done on that one, okay. Resolution number 15, right, I don't want to lose track here, number 15, is the amendatory bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, amending a bond resolution which was dated April 20, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $88,800 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 16 is amendatory bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, amending a bond resolution dated April 20, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $131,230 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 17 is amendatory bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, amending a bond resolution dated April 20, 2015, authorizing the issuance of up to $133,280 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
Favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 18 is amendatory bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, amending a bond resolution dated December 8, 2014, authorizing the issuance of up to $40,800 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 19 is amendatory bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, amending a bond resolution dated December 8, 2014, authorizing the issuance of up to $509,680 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 20, amendatory bond resolution dated September 17, 2015, amending a bond resolution dated December 8, 2014, authorizing the issuance of up to $306,000 aggregate principal amount serial bonds of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. And that wraps all that refinance up, and as Trustee Alfassi mentioned, hopefully we'll get some very good rates, we know we will, and, because we have good bond rating and rates are very cheap, so it's good to refinance when you can. The next is resolution 21, authorizing year-end budget modifications for the fiscal year ending May 31, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
In favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 22 is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $487,851.60. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Leo.
Favor.
Trustee Alfassi.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Are there any discussion items that the board would like to raise tonight? Any fresh information here? Okay, if not, we're going to go to our departmental reports of the board, and we're going to start with our very able Chief of Police, John Costanza, who's going to be honored at a dinner I see coming up, too. Congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of announcements, I know that it's been a couple of meetings that have lieutenants filled in, filling in, and Lieutenant Bell's filled in the last meeting, Peggy's last day on apparel was just September 12th, so I just want to wish her the very best in her retirement, thank her for all her tremendous contributions to the Police Department, her leadership, her developments of all the youth programs, she left the department in such a better place than she found it, and we can't thank her enough and we wish her the very best. One of the things that she did mention was that schools were about to open at her presentation, schools are now open. I just want to remind our residents that our police officers do follow school buses on a regular basis. The fine for passing a stop school bus starts at $250, it's five points on your license, and there's zero tolerance towards it. So we just, we just want our people to realize that it's a safety issue, the children are out there, they get excited, they're running across the street, be very aware of that and to make sure you follow the rules of the road. And really, that's my report for this evening.
Wonderful, thank you.
If I may, Chief, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Chief, we spoke a little bit offline about some concerns that our citizens have, renters and homeowners around the AC Jeffries post. We know we have the big project going on, we know we've had a couple of hiccups, there was a water main or there were some water issues, and so with that said, I know that the road's been closed, I know parking's a big issue down there, there's been some reports that there was a flatbed, apparently with the construction site that was parked in the same spot, taking up three or four spots for three days at a time. So with that said, the community has asked that we have a meeting if we could to enlighten what's going on in the future. I know we're going to have that road closed for a little while, and if we would have that meeting at the VFW post, I know I spoke with the mayor, and you're in favor of having that meeting, getting everyone informed, so will you make yourself available?
Absolutely, I mean, the more information that is shared, the more input that the residents have, the better off we are. It is a long-term project, there are, like any big construction project, going to be some problems along the way, but if, you know, we work collectively, we could address those problems and hopefully mitigate some of those issues.
Great, I'll arrange that, thank you very much.
That's good. Frank DiMarco. We're not picking up leaves yet, are we?
No, no, yes. Too many other concerns right now. But my long-awaited forecast for the two thousand sixteen winter season.
We've been waiting with.
I promise at the next meeting, I've been working on it, so it's just going to take me a little time. But I will get that to everybody by the next meeting. I just want to touch a little bit on the canopy for our salt shed. Besides during rainy conditions, the salt leaching into our storm system, like you've stated, it's one of our DEC requirements that we do cover the salt shed, amongst some other requirements, but they're allowing us some time to work on it. So yeah, it, it is pretty much required. But I also wanted, most importantly, touch on Con Edison being all over the place in Tukahoe, tearing up our roads. I'm getting a lot of calls on the condition of the roads, you know, roads that we've just paved within the past couple of years are now getting destroyed. They're getting torn up again. But these are gas mains that need to be replaced. They, they're archaic. There's many leaks that's associated with these, these mains. I know Ridge, Governors, Terrace, Fairview, they've completed Lincoln Avenue. I've got them to complete Columbus Avenue by the Crestwood Loft, so I could get that area paved that leads up to Dante. So these are major intersections. I think this week, they did some electrical work behind Underhill here at Village Hall, and now they're working on the gas mains. So they're pretty aggressively replacing a lot of these gas mains because, number one, they're dangerous. They are leaking, and they're in dire need of repair. So me, as a DPW official, it, it's hard for me to say you can't replace your gas main because that puts the liability on the Village of Tukahoe. But what I do promise to the residents is that I'm doing the best I can to make sure that these roads are paved before the winter months. My deadline is, is hopefully at the end of October where all my final pavement gets done. So I do promise that I will clean up best as I can. Any questions, please feel free to give me a call.
When does the asphalt plant close?
They usually run until late October, November.
Okay.
They run into November if the weather's decent and contractors are out there paving. Especially municipalities do pave last minute. I don't like paving past October, but if we have to, we will.
Mr. DiMarco, can we also make sure that when they repave the section that they destroyed, that they do it properly? Sometimes you get the large bumps and it's not patched properly. So I just want to make sure, is there any way we can just make sure that they patch properly?
Well, first of all, you know, we've, I've, I've drafted law back when I started that, you know, when we do pave, we pave from curb to curb. So those patches are no longer in existence. I, I do go out and monitor every paved area. I, I do meet with the Con Edison representative to mark each pavement. And, and Patrillo takes, he takes home care of Tukahoe, who is our paving contractor. You know, he calls me when he's in the area. He tells me what roads he's going to be working on. He asks me if I have any concerns at all. And I'm always meeting him out there at the roads that are being paved for that particular day or week.
Okay.
He's presently in the area right now. I know he's in Gifford. He did some patches along Main Street here and some other areas.
Let's just hope United Water doesn't come in right after they pave them up.
Never fails. I'm not even going to mention that. Any questions? Oh, I know, Steve, you, you've mentioned lights out on Midland Place.
Correct, correct. And I know you're on top of it.
Yeah. The reason those lights are out is I need to work in conjunction with Con Edison because the lights are phasing in and out. So it tells me there's a short.
Right.
When is a short? I don't like to get involved unless Con Edison repairs that short. It does create an electrical problem. But they do promise me that before Friday, those lights will be repaired. I think there's two lights that are on the south side of Midland Place.
Correct.
All right. If there's any more, you know, have, have everybody call me. Feel free to call me. I'm always available. Our lights are repaired every day. Our light truck goes out basically every single day. The police department lets us know because they're out at night patrolling, that'll, they let us know when lights are out, and they give us a list, and we basically work off of that list. But unless residents call me and tell me there's a light in front of their house that's out, we basically don't know.
Maybe we can just spend a moment talking a little bit about Crestwood, the roadway in Crestwood. I know we've met, you and I, and David have met with the developer. And the issue, because I get so many people saying, hey, why don't you just pave the darn road in front of, and that section there. And what some people noticed, actually, I was surprised at how many people picked up on it, there is an issue with the height of the road. So it's not just a repaving project. There actually has to be a section of that roadway and the under bed has to be removed. And the issue there is who's at fault for, not necessarily at fault, but who's going to be responsible for paying the extra cost burden for that. And we've then, we've maintained our position that it's not our issue. It's the developer's issue. It's probably really the developer's subcontractor's issue or his contractor's issue. Seems like that issue was rectified at the last meeting. Any idea when you think they're going to, I know they still have to design it. They have to draft. There's a little bit of paperwork involved there, but.
I, I've met with JMC, who's a consultant for.
Right.
Giulio Monaco and at Crestwood Loft Development. They, what happened originally is that the elevations for these establishments were all off. They weren't built as planned. So it, in turn, it wasn't our problem. It's their problem. In doing that, the elevations of the curbs and the sidewalks needed to be at a certain elevation to prevent water from backing up into the building. So if you happen to go by there now and you see the elevations of the sidewalk and curb, they seem much lower than a street. And the reason for that was because of the mistake on the elevation to the building. In correcting that, we need to now lower the road and bring it to the elevations that we need, which is the responsibility of Giulio Monaco.
Right.
In meeting with them the other day, he realized that he does need to take care of this and expedite this in a timely fashion to make it safe for everybody. But most importantly is that over the past couple of months, we've been working pretty aggressively to make sure that no other utility company is going to be coming into the area and tearing up our road that we just paved like they historically do. But we've also did the underground conduit for the traffic lighting signal upgrade.
Right.
For the future. So when that gets upgraded, we don't have to tear the road back up. So DPW, in conjunction with Verdi Electric, who gratuitously did the work for us, that's all completed. It took us about three days. We also realized that the new building at Crestwood Loft was all electric and without any gas mains. So I asked Con Edison if they could run a gas main into the building for future use. So they're not, again, not tearing up our roads after we just completed paving.
Because they're going to have some commercial space there who may need gas for some reason, right?
So working with Giulio Monaco's men, his contractors, Con Edison and myself, they ran a gas main into the side of the building. So at any future date, they could always get gas easily enough. And I think that's basically it. There's a, there's a storm drain that needs to be installed because of the curb heights that are presently there now due to the mistake of the elevations. There's a storm drain that needs to be installed in connection to an adjacent storm drain to prevent any water from settling during storm conditions. Because in excavating that road, we've now brought the elevations down, but the elevation is instead of on a slope, it's now at almost a level condition, which can possibly gather water at some point.
Right. When do you think we'll have it wrapped? I know maybe it's hard for you to predict, but.
Well, I, I think that Giulio Monaco is going to get Persico Contracting to do the remediation work.
Okay.
But just so happens that Persico Contracting is our paving contractors for the year. So I'm hoping within the next three weeks, all of this will get completed.
Oh, wow. Okay, good.
All right. I've been working on a schedule with Persico. They're in Bronxville right now. I'm hoping they come into Tukahoe right after Bronxville. So I don't want to say a week, but I'm giving it three weeks.
Right. Now, if they're paving Mary Marvin streets there in Bronxville, hopefully they'll.
I don't want to rush Bronxville's work.
Because that's heavy equipment, so they're not going to go from Bronxville all the way to the Soundshire or Shell and then come back over. I'm sure they'll, they'll, okay, good.
And I, I think we're also looking to pay Fulton. I think we have some funding to pay Fulton besides our other streets. At the same time, we're going to be doing Columbus Avenue to Dante, to Fisher Avenue, up to Lincoln.
Mm-hmm.
And Lincoln was just paved by Con Edison because they did the gas mains.
Mm-hmm.
So they did probably a four, five hundred foot stretch of Lincoln Avenue.
Yeah, they did. It's.
Which made a big difference.
And every time we get Con Edison to pave on their dime, it's a good day.
That's a good day. That's a good day.
Thank you, Frank.
Any other questions? Okay.
I see tonight we have Mr. Galuzzi, and there's a lot of stuff going on in the village. So I'm sure you have something, some great news to talk to us about.
Mayor, Board, thank you. I just wanted to give thanks to some of the municipalities that did help us along with the road race. It was a monster effort like it is every year. Our thirty-ninth annual Tukahoe Challenge Road Race went off a couple of Sundays ago, the thirteenth, on a beautiful day. We had some nice participation from a lot of families, all kinds of ages, all age groups, rather. Special thank you is out to, of course, the Tukahoe Police Department, Department of Public Works. Frank DiMarco helped out a great deal along with his guys. George Papa Dimitri over in East Chester with the East Chester Auxiliary Police. They came out and helped us out in Crestwood. And of course, Evac. Some of the sponsors I'd just like to make mention of, I hope you don't mind. I would like to read them. Tucked Away, Medi Ray Incorporated, Swirl Enjoy, Cornell's True Value Hardware, West Chester Funeral Home, Nikki's Corner Deli, Eli Tukahoe Terrace Corp, the Seminero family contributed quite a bit to the road race. Phoenix Fitness, Philly at Village Realty, Vilagio's Pizza, Bentley's, Roma Restaurant, East Chester Taco Chamber of Commerce did a fine job supplying drinks and fruit bars, health bars, and of course, water for the, for the event. Cowers, Paint and Glass, Martine's Fine Bake Shop over in Crestwood. Couple of, couple of more thank yous. Ameriprise, Andrew's Memorial. So we do appreciate all the contributions from, from these businesses. This weekend coming up is one of our bigger weekends here in the Village of Tukahoe. It's our, our music festival, which incorporates the Padre Pio Feast. And that all happens in Depot Square in front of the General Sopow Foundation. General Sopow Foundation, David Pope, producer A.J. Pope are the ones putting it on for us each year. The festival is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday and Saturday, the festival begins at 5:00 PM and goes till 10, 11:00 PM. We do have food vendors out there if you want to bring your families and your kids out there. There's plenty to eat, see, and do. Italian music, quite a few Italian bands through the course of the day. Saturday is the actual music festival, which begins at 8:00 PM. We do have Disney recording artist Sammy Sanchez, Zach Matarri, and our feature, Carmen, will be present for the event on Saturday. So come out Saturday night. That would be the main event or the main night of the weekend celebrating Padre Pio. Sunday, the feast begins at 12:00 noon and goes till 7:00 PM. And that, of course, is the last day of the festival, which will bring about the procession by the Gilio Band. Procession will begin at 7:00 PM inside Depot Square and go back to the church with St. Pio. Each year, we do have quite a, quite a bit of participation in the festival. And again, I wanted to emphasize Saturday night would be the bigger night. If you had to make a choice to coming out on any day, we'd, we'd like you to come out on Saturday because that's when we, we do have the pop music, which your kids would like. So Italian music the rest of the weekend, the pop music on Saturday evening. So you want to come out for that.
These are some pretty big names. I mean, I, I wasn't familiar, I have to admit, with them, but then I went and, and looked online. There could be a lot of people in Tukahoe this weekend.
Well, they, if you go on YouTube, you'll see quite a few videos from Carmen, Sammy Sanchez, and Zach Matarri. They're very poppy with the kids. And Disney being as popular as it is, we should have a nice crowd. And A.J., A.J. Pope has done unbelievable, put, put forth a great effort in advertising this event. And he's done a lot, a lot of work for it. So it should turn out wonderful.
Looking forward to it. And Rain or Shine, right?
Rain or Shine.
I hate to even say that, but it looks like the weatherman, I've been listening to him, and he's, looks like it's calling for the weather.
Plenty of concerts and shows. You can bring your umbrella, enjoy the fun, enjoy the music. You know, a little water, it's not going to hurt anything. We're just going to go on with it. So come on out. Thank you.
There's no such thing as bad weather, only bad clothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Camille, anything from the clerk's office?
Just a reminder that the clerk's office is open before our meetings, and the next meeting is October fifth, so we'll be open that evening from 7:30 to 8:00 PM.
Somebody needs a notary or?
Quick transactions, cash key.
Okay, cash key for the parking lot. Good. Gary, anything?
Nothing I mind.
Nothing legal tonight. David, I know you did a lot of talking tonight. Anything else you want to add?
You know what? I've, I've, my list is done here. Everyone's kind of hit on this.
All right.
If there's anything for me, let me know, but.
Okay, thank you. Our next village board meeting will be on October fifth, two thousand and fifteen. And that's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And as always, we start with your very able and trusty Deputy Mayor, Thomas Giordano. Those nice glasses tonight, too.
Thank you, Mayor Steve. Just a couple of announcements this evening. Since we're not in our normal cycle for meetings, we don't yet have agendas for the zoning or planning board for the following month. We also don't have, as you have noticed this evening, trustee Greg Louisi. And as his surrogate liaison to the history committee, I've been asked to read the following announcement regarding an open house on Saturday, October tenth at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Tukahoe Village Hall, where you are invited to visit the Mini Marble Museum and learn about the marble industry. There will be discussions. There'll be films and videos of old and new Tukahoe. You'll also be able to browse through over a hundred and fifty loose leaf binders to learn about our schools, veterans, notables, and much more. As you may or may not know, our committee has been extremely dedicated over the years to curating memorabilia and all kinds of articles and other written historical, historical artifacts for our village. And they have a great collection outside and are always willing to share and discuss it. So please come. I know that Mayor Steve had mentioned the Gold Star Mother's Day. I just wanted to give some more details on that as to this year. It will be at the Gold Star Mother's Bridge in Tukahoe, starting at nine o'clock AM. And the Bob Foster, the commander of VFW Post 2285, also wanted to announce that there will be a ceremony at 3:00 PM at Kensington Plaza Memorial Walk. I've always found it to be a very touching ceremony, so please come.
That's it. Thank you very much. We're going to move now over to trustee Alfassi.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Didn't have any additional announcements. Just wanted to remind everyone at home that Yom Kippur is fast approaching. It's sundown on Tuesday. It's a day of atonement for the Jewish, those of the Jewish faith, and is one of the holiest of, of days for the Jewish community. So I would like to have just wish, well wishes for those who are observing Yom Kippur. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And trustee Leo?
Yes. I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber had many volunteers for the Tukahoe Road Race on September thirteenth. They donated and handed out beverages, energy bars to all the runners. Again, thank you to the Chamber members for, for coming and supporting the event and the donations. And the next general meeting is to be held on Tuesday, October thirteenth at Roma's. I also want to remind everybody that the Tukahoe Library has many different programs, some of which are as follows. The ABCs of resumes and job search, which will be held Wednesday, September thirtieth, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. Then on Friday, October ninth, they will have a, I guess, a program, Alfred Hitchcock and the Making of Psycho. Then there will be a teen craft on September twenty-third at 4:00 PM. And then on September twenty-fifth, join Ms. Ellen for stories and songs for ages two to six-year-olds at Friday at 11:00 AM. Registration is required, so please call the library to make a registration. Then there's a baby story time, again, with Ms. Ellen for stories and songs and rhymes, and especially for babies, open to ages from birth to two years old, and that's Thursday at 11:00 on September twenty-fourth. Again, registration is required. And then there's a new program. It's Espanol Storytime. Come and learn a little Spanish while having some fun with Ms. Myrna, and that is Monday, September twenty-eighth at 11:30. It's open ages from, to birth, birth to five years old. And again, registration is required. And I just want to remind everybody that the library has a Library to Go program, which has many different components. And they're having a program tomorrow, which is tomorrow at 12:00 PM. It's Learn How to, How to Use Facebook. Please bring your phone, laptop, or tablet, and I guess someone will be there to help you with the process. And I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll be very brief. I'm just going to mention a couple of items. First is that we have started our negotiations with the Teamsters, the collective bargaining agreement that we have with the Teamsters. They represent our Department of Public Works, and that's just getting off the ground. We've had one meeting with them. We are also negotiating at the same time, and these negotiations are well underway, with the police union. So those are both very active. David and I are on the negotiating committee for the village, and so far, so good. This week, there was an article in the East Chester Review, I noticed, about the Tukahoe Ice Ring closes doors. And I just wanted to mention that yes, they did close their doors, but they're going to be opening their doors again. So one of the original partners of the business has taken the business back over, and hopefully in short order, he's going to get that ice ring up and running again. So we wish him all the best, and hopefully we'll cut a ribbon on that business down there once again. That's going to bring us to the second opportunity to address the board on anything at all. So if anybody would like to speak, please come on up.
My paramount concern, and it should be the paramount concern of the board, is the bridge. When is it coming down? Before it falls down on the tracks, and I'm sure Tukahoe being for a lot of. And I'm sure Tocco will be in for a lot of lawsuits if that happens.
We did have an engineer who looked at it, and we know it's not gonna fall down. It's not in imminent danger of falling down. It's a project that is on our radar to get done. I don't have an exact date for you as to when it's gonna actually come down.
Well, it's been, I think, about five years, I think, now, already.
It's been closed, yeah. That we closed it off, yes.
And the structure is not as sound as a lot of people think. Because I've walked across that bridge many a times before it was closed, with an express train going by, and I felt the vibrations. I live at the last building in the condo, and when the express train goes by, the chandelier vibrates. So before anything really happened, I think we better concern, put our first concern on that bridge. We have other projects going on in Tocco, but I feel Tocco is outgrowing itself. First of all, the projects on that Midland Place and the traffic which is gonna create is gonna be horrible. As it is now, it's kind of bad. Especially by Bentley's, that traffic light there is horrendous, believe me. Because another thing is, when there's a school bus picking up the children, traffic backs up from Fairview to the train station and from Fairview to Marbledale Road. In fact, the other night, there was an emergency, and I saw the police car waving in and out, and I had to go up beside the street to avoid him. So I think that's another concern with this village, is the traffic problems. And where is the traffic going to exit and enter at the Crestwood Plaza situation? Is it gonna be on to Fisher?
You mean the new building that we built down there? Their parking lot is off of Fisher. The only way to get into their parking lot is off of Fisher Avenue.
Yeah. Now, that's another problem. Have you ever been there when the early mornings, when the train comes in for the commuters? Traffic is backed up there, too. We have to, I think you have to realize that the traffic pattern in Tocco has to be revised one way or another, because it's gonna be really bad once that building is full. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board. Thank you very much for having me this evening. My name is Tara Ritchie, and I live at 4 Bellew Avenue in East Chester. And I came here tonight because last Thursday evening at around 7:00 PM, music started playing at Gina Marie's Chianti Restaurant on Marbledale Avenue. And my concern isn't that they're playing music at the venue. My concern is that they're playing music until 10:00 PM on a school night. I have two small children, and with my windows closed and with my air conditioning going, I was able to hear music very clearly in my home. My children were up until about 9:45 because they couldn't stop listening to the noise outside. So I'm also expecting my third child. I would like to go to sleep at around 9:00 o'clock each night. So I just respectfully request that we consider not allowing cabaret nights and licenses on weeknights.
When was this again? Can you please tell me?
Last Thursday night. And to be fair, I already talked to the chief about this, and I think we're simpatico on what needs to happen going forward on the weeknights, but we wanted to get it on the record. And then I also just want to address the weekends. I mean, I have no problem with having music playing there. The decibels can get so loud that it backs up to a residential neighborhood. The four homes that align right there, elderly people live there, and they complain about the noise. And I'm talking like mid-'90s, '85, the two men on the side in their '70s, early '80s. And they all meet at my one neighbor's driveway and discuss the issue, and they're all very desperate about it. And of course, they elect me then to come to the board meeting to have the conversation. So again, if we can do something even on the weekends, and maybe ended at 10:00 PM versus the 11:00 PM, I think the people in that neighborhood would just be ever so grateful. We don't want to cut off the fun. We just want to make sure that it's, you know, enjoyable for everybody.
Thank you for coming down.
Does this occur every weekend?
No, it happens sporadically, to be fair to the establishment. It happens sporadically, but you just don't know when it's gonna happen. I don't, I've never gone to the restaurant. I've, I don't frequent their website to see about their events. But just, you know, Thursday night, all of a sudden, at 7:00 o'clock, we were rocking away until about 10:00. And I called the police department. They were wonderful, by the way, and they told me that this is where I need to come to talk about this issue. So I just want to mention it on behalf of myself and my neighbors, who can't come out at this hour to represent themselves. But, you know, just mainly for my children, because I think everyone, or most people in the room, know what it's like to have overtired children who then have to get up and go to nursery school the next day. So thank you in advance for the consideration.
Thank you, and you presented it very diplomatically. We'll make sure we tell your neighbors.
All right.
Good job. Thank you. Anybody else tonight? Oh, thank you. Mr. Burke is 100% on point there. We have the Senior Bazaar, which is actually coming up on October 3rd, Saturday, and it's a Father Fata Hall, right? Which is in the Assumption Church. And we wish everyone to come on out. I think it starts at 10:00, I think, if I remember right. I think it's 10:00 in the morning, if I remember. Go every year. It's their largest fundraiser, so please come out and support the Tocco seniors. And if there is no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Till next time, Tocco. Have a very good evening.
Good night.